I move to approve minutes for way with council meeting. It's twenty sixteen.
Second down.
Any discussion on this? Second down, all those in favor, six five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five from zero. First item on the agenda, we have an Asia-Pacific Cultural Center organizational opening two thousand and twenty-five. Welcome.
Honorable mayor and respected members of the council.
Push the button, I'm gonna go. For about two seconds.
Can you go?
Yeah.
Honorable mayor and respected members of the council, thank you so much for having me tonight. It is a great honor and after twenty-nine years, wow, where have I been? I should have been here a very long time ago, but it's better late than never. And I'm so happy to be here to share with you who we are as an organization and striving forward, making a huge difference. So, Asia-Pacific Cultural Center was born nineteen ninety-six and our mission is to bridge communities and generations through arts, culture, education, and business. So, we have been showcasing, representing, and teaching about the forty-seven nations that make up all of Asia and all of the South Pacific. So, we are inside the schools, we are inside government, and we're inside different organizations as they need to learn about these countries, and then we're in public. And we do many great things, every single day. And so, we just opened a brand-new building. This is our home, and we have been working on it for a very long time. And after twenty-nine years, and we have it, and on August twenty-ninth this year, we opened it up, eighteen thousand five hundred square feet. We now have many classrooms, we finally have offices for our forty-seven staff, commercial kitchen, library, dance studio, Hall of Nations, art gallery, and a large-capacity performing arts center. So, we're so very proud and we can do many great things now. We also, in the month of May this year, we opened up seventy-eight units of affordable housing for seniors, in partnership with Low-Income Housing Institute. With their experience and their greatness in fundraising, we were able to partner and open on seventy-eight units. So, and this houses many different homeless veterans and people on the streets and were on the list for, to be housed. And of course, it was open to the Asians and Pacificaian seniors as well. So, there are a mix of communities in there, and with our cultures involved in different activities and how we treat people and especially the elders, they're having a great time. So, we have five big programs. Our biggest and largest is our culture program. So, our culture program, and as you can see there, just between January first this year to September thirtieth, we did eight hundred and forty-seven presentations, and number of people we serve is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand or more than that. So, and you can see our record from twenty-three, twenty-four as well. And these are the different kinds of activities that we have been performing and reaching so many people through our culture program of all the different countries. And then we have, this is community engagement services, which we started and opened it up during the COVID. And look, just between January and September, we have served through this year, we outreach and we assist different kinds of people, the way, all the different kinds of services they need. We also assist small businesses throughout the state, and now we have, and now we have over two thousand businesses owned by Asia-Pacific people that we assist. We do food distribution, help employees, staff, and seniors out in the maintenance as well. And then we have mental health, we just did this because through the COVID, we get experience so much of it. And by now, for the past nine months, three thousand five hundred seventy-eight people were served by our mental health services. And the majority of them that we serve are through the students, we are inside the schools, serving our students, Asia-Pacific students with mental health services. Our community environmental justice program, because so much of environmental issues, we don't know, our people don't know, and they haven't known. But many of them are poor and low-income, and they live in different areas, who are impacted negatively by environmental issues. So, we started this program to teach them and to start letting them know and help them, help them understand what environmental issues are, and then to help them work themselves into, especially in their homes, to get rid of the toxic stuff.
Yes, speaker, can you push it back on?
It's okay, I'm loud. So, one of our greatest opportunities to serve is through our promised winners of youth. We provide services to our youth program, to many different schools, we are in seven school districts now, and many of these young men and young ladies have situations with credits and grades, and they have dysfunctional families and poor family, low-income families, so they come to school, lack of sleep and lack of eating and all this kind of stuff, so poor grades, and then they become violent in schools, and also they're involved in drugs. And that's our goal, we work with them because we speak their languages and we look like them, so we make a difference for them, and we turn their lives around. And as you can see, in just twenty-four, twenty-five, that we just finished in last June, we had eighty-nine seniors, and we graduated all of them. And the same thing we did last, the last school year before that. So, every year, we strive to make sure at least we graduate the seniors, so that they can have better jobs and they can at least go to two years of college or get a trade school. And so, our program for youth is not locked up in just Asia-Pacific people, and that's for all of our services. We serve specifically target, but not limited to, so we do serve other, many other non-API. And as you can see there, for our youth program, we have so many students, eighty-three percent or eighty-six percent is API, but the rest of the rest of the world, and because they're attracted to our program, because we use culture and language specific. And then we do a lot of cultural awareness and a lot of teaching. And we're inside many, many schools, and there's so much that we can do with these students, turn their lives around, teachers and principals enjoy our work in the schools because we help them, and there's no time for them to concentrate on these kinds of mannerisms. And so, we want to thank you for tonight, I know it's short and sweet, but I'm at, on South Tacoma Way in Tacoma, I'm just a phone call away, but I intend to, my future strive for the city of Ruston is to work with youth school districts and see how many of our students are involved in here and how many of our elders are too, but at the same time, we offer assistance to all the rest of the city of Ruston. And I hope to build that relationship very nicely here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any questions, Mr. Councilman?
Yes.
Where is the community facility?
We are on Fiftieth and South Tacoma Way.
And where is the multi-family housing?
It's on thirty-eighth and G Streets, right next to Lincoln High School.
Anything else?
It's very impressive, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I think you can leave it there. I'll do that.
Excuse me, the staff report nothing at this time, and we open it to general public comment. If anyone in the audience can address council on anything on tonight's agenda or anything they'd like to think forward, understanding the topic question answered, if the council or myself may respond to questions at their votes, or mayers' time or council time. That being said, we'll go row by row, and with your call, can you say your name and address for the record, first row, up the left.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Name and address, please.
Which one am I using? Oh, just one. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Naomi Wilson, I'm speaking tonight in the opposition of ordinance fifteen ninety-three, the proposal to repeal the sunset clause and make the reduced liquor sale hours permanent. When ordinance fifteen eighty-five was passed, the council wisely included a sunset clause. That clause would promise that before this policy became permanent, the city would review the evidence, evaluate the results, and make a data-informed decision. Now that council is proposing to skip a first reading and move straight to a vote. The staff report tonight, you have in front of you, provides inconclusive evidence that the ordinance has achieved the intended effect. And when you look at the business data, two out of those three establishments saw decreases in receipts compared to last year. While I understand the challenges of balancing neighborhood concerns with the needs of support businesses, small businesses, but our goal should be to find a solution that works for both, to protect residents' quality of life as well as sustain local businesses that make Ruston vibrant. I would ask the council not to make this reduction permanent based on incomplete data, instead, take this as an opportunity to bring neighbors and businesses together to explore alternatives, whether that's better communication or approaches that address the concerns without harming livelihoods. I would urge the council to remember why we commit to evidence-based decision-making, because it is what allows the public to trust that our actions are fair, not biased, and grounded in the facts rather than perceptions or belief. It's not lost on me that tonight is November fourth, so I would urge you to follow the evidence and strengthen both credibility and community confidence in local government. Please vote no on ordinance fifteen ninety-three and commit to finding a better solution that works for everyone in Ruston. Thank you.
Anyone else, first row, onto the second row, general public comment.
Tillyan Teponsa, five-two-two, North Shore Street. Obviously, mine's gonna be a little less serious tonight, and thank you very much for that presentation, that was amazing, I had no idea that all the work that they were doing. Okay, so, our community, one of our biggest events of the year is the tree lighting, and that is coming up in one month. So, I'm here to get attention, and if you want to volunteer, donate cookies, help with setup, clean up, all those things, I know we're gonna do our annual food drive and stuff like that, I've got a sign-up sheet, we'll do a meeting, but anyways, we've had a great turnout last year, we had a lot of people volunteer time and donate things, so we're just looking to keep that continuing. Thank you.
I'm working on it.
Number four.
Sorry, that was off.
Anyone else, second row, general public comment.
Hello, Councilman Mayor, I'm Jonathan Baker So, five-one-three-five, North Highland Street. I am opposed to ordinance fifteen ninety-three, as I was a year ago. There's been a lot of bias when it's come to this vote, individuals have been directly affected by individuals that were immigrated, and they took that into their vote instead of looking at the community. Also, if you look at the place of issue, there's also certain individuals that were close by it that would also sway their vote to passing fifteen ninety-three. So, this whole ordinance is riddled with bias, and there's not a single legitimate quantifiable data within this poll that you put online. Also, it's riddled with public safety, public safety, public safety, yet we have street stop signs that are still worn down, falling apart, they don't have proper reflectiveness, but we're so worried about this one bar, I retract my statement, all bars, apparently it was every single bar that was causing issues with people being drunk and intoxicated past the hours of twelve. Even though that most of the incidents happened before twelve, even at ten, maybe ten, not at one. So, Ruston is also one hour, closer to one hour earlier than the rest of the state of Washington. Are we turning to a bigger community, or are we actually gonna support our businesses? Right, we talk about the taking money away and definitely affecting businesses, but it's not really a hundred percent about the businesses. The businesses will thrive some way, somehow, they always do, but it's the individuals that work for the businesses that this affects the most, right, or taking the tips away out of their pockets, or taking money out of their pockets, that's not what I'm gonna do, we talk about public, 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 but as far as I'm concerned, it's all about the E-I-I-I when it comes to this council and when it comes to fifteen ninety-three. So, I highly suggest there would be a little bit of self-reflection and either push it forward, not make a vote tonight, and then also, you know, twelve, can't really do leaders' eve, had everybody closed that twelve, so at least maybe think of an amendment for certain holidays, certain gatherings, maybe permit to go past that time. I think we do a little bit better on being actually quantitative data to support our arguments, and then also find better solutions for not only the businesses, but also the community in here and out instead of the one-sided, just the businesses.
Thank you. What else, second row?
Jessica Moser, five-zero-three-five, North Allen Street. I also like to reconsider, I have a different perspective, I think that with all the economic headwinds that we're facing, to make us less competitive as a city than we're to, when we are so small and surrounded by a city that doesn't have the same restrictions, it's not there for small business owners. As mentioned, there are also not just the owners, but the actual people we use, when we talk about one or two percented, it may not seem consequential to you, but as a small business owner, I know if you are, you're, you're supposed to see growth. So, to see a decline, I mean, if you've done something actually detrimental to their business model, and we should reconsider, we should come back and think about what the true issues are. I think the issue that I had last time this was literally passed last year, was that the metrics didn't really support this type of strong bill. So, I would like to see some data to support why we thought this would be a better choice, if there was a different way to come to this, I sent multiple emails talking about getting liquor kind of supported here to do the controls. I just don't feel like we thought about how else this could be addressed in more of a community way, going door-to-door the last few months, this is a hot issue for a lot of members, maybe. And I know the last time this came up, this place was packed with refugees and people advertised, I don't think tonight we have the same show up, because I don't think they know about it. I think it would be a really big disservice to our community to pass this without having their input, and I would encourage you all to go door-to-door and talk to that approach to them versus having them come to you, I think that's the right way to do this, and I don't think that's at that. Thank you.
On to the third row, general public comment, third row.
Hi, I'm Laura Lysider, five-one-five, North Leonard Street. I also am against repealing the sunset clause, and my reasoning is the same as what I spoke about a year ago, the state, the powers that the city has are all powerful with state, the state has put in place a system and legislation on how to deal with problems like this, and from what I've heard, and I haven't heard anything different this year, nobody is utilizing that system. My understanding, if you want the behavior of this bar, the owners of the bar that are responsible for some of the behavior, you want it to stop, you want them to take some action. The things you have tried haven't worked, and the only thing I think that's gonna make an impact is if the owners don't do what they're supposed to do, you complain to the liquor board, they're the only place that has the ability to really hit them where they're at and to suspend their license, nobody's been calling, nobody's lodged a complaint, we have liquor board office locally in Tacoma, they're required by law to start investigation when they get a complaint, you can file a complaint online, you can do it anonymously, and if people aren't willing to go through the state procedures that have already been set up to address issues like this, I don't think the sunset clause is gonna help, I just don't think, and for those reasons, I'm against repealing the sunset.
Thank you. Anyone else, third row? Better go again?
No, I'm not.
Well, first to this, go. All right. Fred Wysiker, five-one-three-zero, North Shirley. It's good to see a full form here, I didn't see you guys last month, especially on election night, just wanted to also remind the people today is Veterans Day, and we have two veterans serving the council, thank you for helping us out in the audience. Anyway, we'll talk about our rights and our responsibilities, I'd just like to read something, just kind of remind us how we got here, at least in my opinion. Excuse me, that is best on. It's the veteran, not the preacher, who has given us the freedom of religion, it's the veteran, not the reporter, who has given us freedom of the press, it's the veteran, not the poet, who has given us freedom of speech, it's the veteran, not the campus organizer, who has given us the freedom to assemble hopefully peaceful in the future, it's the veteran, not the lawyer, who has given us the right to a fair trial, and it's the veteran, not the politician, who has given us the right to vote, it's the veteran who salutes the flag, who serves unto the flag his coffin, who's draped to the flag. This time, on Veterans Day, to give a chance to thank a vet, also respect for service, and most of all, to make the best use of the responsibility, of the rights we got in being responsible and productive in it. Thank you.
Mark Schinglebacker, fifty-three-o-two, North Forest Street. I'm here to enforce the ordinance to keep the bars closed at one o'clock. A lot of people come up and talk to me, and I don't see any business owners here, but you know, I'm not sure, wanting to stay open to the laws, not here, what's your opinion on that? Living near some of these places, I do still have issues with noise and problems, wait four, one o'clock in the morning, I'm awaking often, and while you understand all these years of trying to solve a problem that, no matter what it wants, business owners, they don't want to solve, I feel that it should be closing early, there it is now, I think the one o'clock closing was a gift for one year, I think that having pictored all the businesses along the water from Mount Aaron Ruston, they're all closing at ten o'clock, a lot of the places I go to and sit down, they're closing at ten o'clock. So, a small majority of businesses stay open till two o'clock, and a lot of those are in commercial areas where there isn't any risk. This noise and traffic is an issue in Ruston, this needs to be stopped at the bars. Coming up here tonight, we've got to pass by two cars on Fifty-first Street, double yellow line, closing early just keeps the riffraff out of town sooner than later. Please, listen tonight, please, about keeping ordinance where it is right now. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else, third row? Onto the fourth row, general public comment, fourth row.
Senator, five-three-zero-two, North Forest Street. And I'm here also to urge you to cast ordinance fifteen ninety-three to repeal the sunset clause of ordinance fifteen eighty-five, and I want to thank you all for passing ordinance fifteen eighty-five last year, since then, the neighborhood that we live in has experienced various, severe disruptions, although we're still experiencing that, I'll be grateful for the extra hours of sleep, but most of the rest of the town, it's on hold next. This summer, Parks Tacoma sponsored by our sixth evening concerts, and I saw that that took place over three weekends, you hear from residents who are very understandably upset about these disruption to their daily existence. Fortunately, all of these events are ten p.m., and were contained to a few occasions. It's a little different where we live, where we are subject to destruction seven nights a week, and those are the most hard, don't happen until after ten p.m. Three main establishments that are affected by this ordinance, two of them showed a decrease in receipts, and it could be that they're making a difference by paying less overhead. The other establishment, which was planned for before fifteen eighty-five was passed, shows a significant increase in attendance, since the passage, I know that they make significant changes to their operations. In my observations, since the passage of fifteen eighty-five, has not been made apparent that an establishment on our side of town, one of the problems, has made any changes to increase its business or relations with the neighbors. By the way, that establishment opened in nineteen twenty-four, nineteen twenty-six, has a tavern that cater to, to military, to these circle workers, and your residents surrounding that, circle closed like over forty years ago. We all desire our peaceful existence in our community, and we want to work together to solve problems, I hope the council feels the same way and wants the best for the whole town. I support those that live here, are invested in, and pay taxes, and go siding with you non-residents that show no regard for the neighborhood and its inhabitants. The situation may not affect you directly, but down the line, there may be something that will, and it would be great to know that the council, fellow citizens, support you. You may not be able to control what happens in Parks Tacoma that affects Ruston citizens, but you can control what happens in Ruston that affects our fellow citizens.
Thank you. Anyone else, fourth row, general public comment. Signal, general public comment, the staff board is general public comment. On to the business of hand, of course, we are resoluting eight-one-five, general motion.
Your Honor, I move to the adoption of Ruston City Resolution eight-one-five, to appoint Mark Schinglebacker to the Ruston Planning Commission, position four, for full term of terms on June thirty, twenty-third.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, thank you for being here for six more years, there's a lot on, I mean, I think everybody in this room does have planning commission tasks to deal with, and you've got some big things coming up, and we appreciate you doing the heavy lifting.
Any other discussion? Signals, papers, signatories, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five-two-zero. It's our agenda ordinance number one-five-nine-three, general motion.
Your Honor, I move to wait first reading and approve Ruston City Ordinance one-five-nine-three regarding the hours to sail quicker, maybe ordinance nine three regarding the hours of sale of liquor, amending ordinance number one five eight five to remove the sunset clause in section three, to make permanent changes in Ruston Municipal Code, section nine oh two oh one oh, provided for separability and corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Second half.
So if it's acceptable to adjourn motion one first? Which is to wait first reading?
I will withdraw my motion and move to wait first reading of Ruston City Resolution one five nine three.
Second half.
Hold up, you're signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
May. I thought we had some discussion about delaying the first reading?
He's just pre-moving. So the process, because we want first reading, motion one first. We'll vote on that, and then motion two. Motion one. Motion two, to wait first reading. Waiting for the reading. And then we'll bring motion two forward. Okay. Very motion one. Wait for the reading.
I withdrew my first motion. Then I made a motion, I move to wait first reading Ruston City Ordinance one five nine three.
I apologize. We have a second discussion. Discussion on waiting for a second.
So I guess my first question is, what is the drawback of not waiting for the first reading? It expires on the sixteenth. We would meet again on the eighteenth, and so we would just have that ordinance expire, and then we could put, we could vote on another ordinance on Tuesday the eighteenth. I guess I don't really understand, if we would have expired, they could open, stay open for two hours, for two days.
So it's all new, we have the whole process that we call, this is just where we make that sunset clause, it's not reading here at that one.
I understand, hey, regardless of the feelings of the ordinance, why would we vote for something to be effective for two days?
My problem with waiving the first reading, I think that that is a significant discussion. We have all talked, I believe all of us have talked about the need for transparency and communication with our residents. I know that's been important to me, and the goal to try to improve transparency. This meeting forum is one of the few places that residents have a chance to approach us for decisions. We, backing up, we have not been here for two sessions because of a lack of a forum. If that's a different discussion, we need to face that, and some sort of method to, as the council, to do better, making sure we have a forum to support each other going through. I mean, there's all kinds of things we can discuss, but that's on us, to not be here for the entire month of October and giving residents a chance to come to us and discuss with us. So, pushing through a hot topic, and I'm conflicted, because the reality is, I plan, I'll be forthright after you're sitting on it and thinking about it and seeing how it's going, I can talk more about it, but I am going to vote to repeal the sunset clause and keep ordinance fifteen eighty-five. So that would be my sign, and we're gonna vote tonight. But I also, just on principle, don't think it's right that we haven't given our residents an opportunity to voice their concerns. So what I'm concerned about pushing this through tonight without discussion, and if it costs extra time and extra money, if that's a loss for not being available for residents to come to and voice their concerns.
Counselor Al.
I completely disagree. My phone number, their phone number, my email, every council member's email is out there for the public to be able to respond, contact us at any point at any time. Most of us, probably, we know my address, we can knock on my door anytime they choose. When we passed this, I left, I voted in favor, I did not intend to vote in favor tonight. I challenged everyone to include business owners to come to council and provide us with solutions, ideas, alternate ideas, they put it in audience, reacted based on what I felt was the best for residents of Ruston, and I still believe that that was the best move for Ruston, for the residents of Ruston. I've talked to residents who have seen an improvement in the quality of life, although it may not be one hundred percent perfect, we've seen an improvement. Yet, I have not had one business owner, come to me, maybe someone else has, if you have, please let me know, and say, we want to offer this suggestion. We want to offer this alternative to just shutting things down. Not one. So, while I understand what you're saying, I disagree. Every resident in Ruston, correct me if I'm wrong, gets a newsletter or a flyer in the mail, and it has my, I believe it has every council member's phone and email address. Everyone of them. So you had, they had the opportunity to reach and talk to us about this, not one. So.
Any other discussion? Counselor Murphy.
I completely agree with the council's call. If I were rewriting ordinance, I would be more in line with Mr. Schindler as an idiot than the current ordinance, and I would be more restrictive. And I take umbrage with the fact that when you use the word us, it should not have been a meaning, because I pro-offered a list of the dates that I was not going to be available for council months ago because of my travel schedule. So it is, all you needed to do was check with the mayor or the county clerk that those dates would have been readily available, so us is not.
Any other discussion? Vote all those in favor of waiting for a reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Forty-one, so super majority, so we're on to motion number two.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ruston City Ordinance one five nine three regarding the hours of sale of liquor, amending ordinance one five eight five to remove the sunset clause in section three, to make permanent changes to the Ruston Municipal Codes at section nine point oh two point oh one oh, providing for separability and corrections, establishing an effective date.
Second half.
Discussion. Counselor Murphy.
Okay. I just wanted to state why I didn't vote in favor of fifteen ninety-three. Keep doing this for all times. Sorry, fifteen ninety-three. Stats-based decision-making is important, and we do need to take into account polling and data, but we also have been elected and expected to use our judgment. We're not just computers using only stats to make a decision. We're responsible for our neighbors, and we are a residential neighborhood. We are not a commercial district. There are, there's a very small part of this town that's a commercial district, but Ruston has changed since nineteen twenty-six, it's a residential neighborhood. Small businesses are vital, and we want small businesses to succeed. It's not, I believe, that a two-hour time difference, actually, it's only really a one-hour shutdown difference and a two-hour survey alcohol, is going to be the differentiator for this, for small businesses. Small businesses need to succeed. Having said that, small businesses need to be responsive to their neighbors, just like the rest of us are. And the businesses in question, this one business in question has not been responsive, has not tried to meet the needs of the neighbors and tried to come to the table, has not answered, you know, the dialogue, the question, and the urge to come to the table. So after a year, it's, my opinion that, I'm not here to be a computer and stats and data only, although that's important, but it's very hard to measure the residents and residential community and their discomfort. And I think Ruston is a residential neighborhood, it needs to stay that way. So those are the reasons that I've changed my vote from last year, and only voting against her. I do just really quickly want to say I apologize. I was not trying to put you in danger, I just think that we need a, we have the council, and I'm pretty sure that it should be okay for people to vote on occasion, but we do need, I think, to have some sort of system to make sure we communicate with each other. This is the only forum where we need, actually, the five of us, to have a conversation, because any more than two people in one conversation is a public records violation. And so this forum, we're all together, is really the only place where we can have a council conversation. So that's why I think it's important for us to be here. And again, my apologies, I was not trying to point a finger at anyone in the council version.
Any other discussion? See, all those in favor of ordinance fifteen ninety-three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Pass now.
Passes four to one. I agenda ordinance fifteen ninety-four, give a motion.
Your Honor, I move to adopt Ruston City Ordinance one five nine four, setting the property tax levy for twenty-twenty-six.
Any discussion? See, none of those in paper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I apologize on this first reading. Taxidermy, first reading. Any discussion? You asked for a taxidermy. You walked my gate, I miss my little turd.